Hi, good evening. This is January 12th, 7:00 regularly scheduled meeting of the planning board. We have four members of the planning board here. Steve Snyder, Dan Murphy, Teresa Jones, and myself, Dana Roscoe. Were required to notify the public that one member is participating remotely. And were required to give a reason for that, and that's because she's traveling in Florida. And hopefully, the Skype will cooperate and she will be with us shortly. Our first order of business tonight is a public forum on the North Main Street project. So Sunderland has an opportunity to receive some federal funding to make improvements to North Main Street. The federal portion of the project would pay for approximately 80% of the job. The remaining 20% would be paid for by the state. The town's responsibility would be paying for the design of the project and also paying for any right-of-way acquisition or any other outside costs of the project. At this point, it's expected that the project would probably go out to bid and be constructed sometime in the 2019-2020 timeframe, I think is what we're looking at right now. So it's not something that's happening eminently. The way the process works, the consultants reach a 25% design phase. At that phase of the project, the Mass DOT holds a very formal public hearing on the process. Then the consultant reviews the comments and submits a 75% design and then 100% design, and then they submit plans, specifications, and P.S. and E., E., what's the E.? We're at the pre-25% design. We have the consultants with us here tonight to let us know what they're thinking about the project right now. And in my mind, this is really the ideal time for folks to be weighing in on their feelings about where we're going with this project. So I'd like to hand it over to...
John Morgan.
John?
Thank you.
To do the presentation. And then really, this is to hear public comment. The planning board has already submitted in writing our comments to the consultant. We'd really like to hear from other folks in the community on how they feel about where we're at right now. So thank you for coming, John, on such a snowy night. Sorry that the weather wasn't more cooperative, but floor is yours.
For having us here. Yes, my name is John Morgan. I'm the project manager for the design team at CHA. And with me tonight is Paul Gertner from our office and Chris Laun from our office, our project engineer. So tonight is really a follow-up to our initial presentation that we made to the select board about a month ago. And we really wanted to come in and get some additional feedback from the community and also let you know how the design has advanced since our initial meeting. We have a couple of presentation plans here tonight. The project on North Main Street will begin at Route 116 and continue north, which is shown on this board here, Route 116 intersection. It'll continue north along North Main Street. The bottom section then goes to the top on the next board, past North Silver Lane here, and then it'll continue to Claybrook Road at the end of the job. And we'll stop just short of Claybrook Road. The project is actually, limits have extended a little bit since the last time we were here. Previously, we were going to stop the project here at School Street, but we've now extended it all the way to the intersection at Route 116. We're implementing a, some new striping here that would include a bike lane in between the right lane and the through lane. Those are some of the proposed changes that were suggested as part of a road safety audit was performed for this intersection by the state. So although we're not reconstructing the whole intersection as part of this project, we do have the ability to do an improvement on this leg of the intersection as part of the project at this time. So that's one of the changes we're looking to implement. So overall, the project involves trying to make a number of improvements. One would be making improvements to the pavement. We would be milling off the top level of pavement, putting down a new course. We're looking at doing more of a, in the areas where there's less pavement out there now, we're going to be looking to add more pavement so it has a good foundation, a good base for future traffic needs. We'll be looking to also reconstruct sidewalks along the entire project length. The existing sidewalks are in poor condition. They don't meet current ADA disability standards. They don't have the correct width today. Many of them are only about four feet wide. The minimum is five feet wide, so we will be widening sidewalks a bit. We'll also be making sure that all the ramps are handicap accessible. There aren't that many locations where we have to cross a street, but those will ensure that they meet codes, as well as crossings of driveways will also meet codes. Some of the other improvements that we're proposing would be to do a widening of the roadway for bicycle accommodations. We're looking to make the street what is called a complete street, which is usable by all roadway users, bicycles, pedestrians, and vehicle. So in order to do that, as proposed, we are proposing to widen the shoulders of the roadway out to five feet, which is the minimum state standard for bicycle accommodations. I will get into a couple of alternatives that we looked at to this as suggested by some of the comments we've received from the board so far, but right now, that is what we're proposing. So the existing roadway is about 26 feet wide, and we'd be looking to widen the roadway out to 32 feet wide, so three feet plus or minus on either side in order to get the minimum width for the travel lanes and the shoulders. We're also looking to replace the existing drainage structures and pipes along the corridor in order to, a lot of them are deteriorating, and we'd be looking to upgrade those as part of this infrastructure project so that there'll be no concerns with drainage for, in the foreseeable future.
The drainage will go all the way up?
Yes, we're looking to do drainage all the way up to the project limits. Wherever, wherever it exists today, we're also looking at adding some basins where needed.
Maybe if you'd just put the rendering up so I think it's easier for most folks to visualize the cross-section rather than the schematics?
Yep. So this cross-section here, the cross-section view of the road, it shows what it is proposed to look like in the future. You have your sidewalks out by the edge of the right-of-way of the roadway. They're separated from the road by the grass median, grass strips that go down either side of the road. So that will not change. We're still proposing to have the sidewalks out at the limits of the right-of-way. And the sidewalks are still proposed to be basically on the backside of the tree, tree The roadway itself would be 26 feet wide, so you have a five-foot bicycle lane, a 11-foot travel lane in each direction, and then a five, six-foot bicycle lane for vehicles heading in the opposite direction.
What's the width of the travel lanes now?
12 feet.
The travel lanes now are about 12 feet with a one-foot shoulder. That's the pretty...
So the road is basically 24 feet wide?
It's about 26, because you have 12-foot lanes and one-foot shoulders. So 13 feet on each side, we get about 26 feet. We'll be going out to 32 feet. So it's about, it's not perfectly even throughout, but it's about three feet on each side of the road that would be additional pavement. And then the other side of the road is the same. You'd have your grass area, which varies in width, and then you have your sidewalk five feet wide out at the limits of the roadway right-of-way. In order to preserve as many trees as possible, which has been noted as a concern along the project, we are looking to do some bump outs of the sidewalk around the trees. And we've looked at each tree, done a preliminary look at each tree to figure out what we think would be necessary in order to preserve the roots and not impact them. So there are some areas where we are looking to do sidewalk easements, where the sidewalk would go out of the roadway right-of-way and onto private property. Now, this is something that is not written in stone. It's something that we will be looking to work with, with the town and the property owners, to see if this is what indeed people want to do. This is an effort to try to preserve the character of the road where we have very mature trees and try to maintain that. So there are some areas, there is a plan that we have here that highlights some of the areas where these permanent sidewalk easements are necessary. I won't go through all of them now, but it's something that if we want to look at individual ones or if people want to look at them afterwards, we could do that. Some of the other proposed changes would be at North Silver Lane. Currently, there's an island with traffic, two-way traffic on both sides of the island. We're proposing to take that island out and create more of a standard T-intersection that would be less confusing and also provide for pedestrian accommodations, provide a crosswalk across the roadway where we're proposing sidewalk at that location. That's just one of the changes that we think would be beneficial. Right now, it's not clear, you know, how you're supposed to, who's supposed to yield and who has the right-of-way on either side of that island. Let's see. So some of the, that's really the, what is the major points that are being proposed here. Since the last meeting, we've also added some additional sidewalk that is, we're showing the sidewalk carried all the way to Claybrook Road on both sides of the roadway. Originally, we had stopped that short at the, on the, on the west side, we had stopped at the last driveway. And at, on the east side, we had actually stopped back at this proposed crosswalk right here, just north of North Silver Lane. But now, we have it shown, extended all the way to Claybrook Road where there would be a crosswalk across North Main Street there. That was, as a result of some feedback that we had received early in the process, that we wanted to look at that. Now, this sidewalk on the east side of the roadway would involve some permanent sidewalk easements in order to fit that. It doesn't fit well within the layout, so that's something that we'll have to further explore to see if the property owners at those locations are interested in having that sidewalk extend and willing to work with the town as far as sidewalk easements So that's, that's some of the improvements that we have proposed. There have been a couple of alternate suggestions that have come up. One of those being doing something different for bicycle accommodations. Instead of widening the shoulders on the roadway, having a separated bicycle lane or shared bicycle pedestrian path on one side of the roadway in order to keep the roadway narrow, but utilize some of the green area that exists between the sidewalk and the road. We did take a look at that, and we have concerns about that option with respect to impacts to trees. Because we would need a minimum of eight feet for a bicycle lane if it's two-way bicycle traffic, and if it's shared with pedestrians, I believe the minimum is 10 feet wide. That, fitting that width in here, a minimum of, has to be a minimum of six feet off the roadway. You have to have separation between the travelway and the bike path. And to do all that, we are, we looked at it, we laid out a path, and it did look like it was going to impact quite a few trees. So it's an option that we could explore further if the town really wants to, but at this point, our recommendation would be to stick with the widened shoulders and we think that is the way to better accommodate the bicycle traffic without changing the character of the road, such as impacting trees. That's our opinion at this point. So yes, we have received numerous comments regarding the project from the Pathways Committee, the Planning Board, the Historical Commission, and the Conservation Commission. So we're trying to incorporate all of those into our design and make sure that we're considering all the comments that have been raised. This is, you know, a lengthy list of comments that I, you know, I won't go through each one of them, but we are considering them all. So I think at this point, I'd like to start hearing from the board and the public.
Great.
See if we can answer some questions.
Yeah, I am. I'm gonna go ahead and open up the floor, but I mean, the planning board has submitted written comments, and I don't want to take up all of the time with our comments, so I really want to open it up to the floor. I will say that Dan Murphy did go out and put some surveying stakes. So if you noticed, the survey stakes on North Main Street with the orange band on them, that's, that's the proposed edge of pavement to edge of pavement. So that's how wide the asphalt would be under this proposal as it stands now. So if you've noticed those are now that you know what they are, if you do notice them, they're on either side of the road. They're, they're directly across from each other, so now that you know that what they are, you know, they should make more sense. So I'll open up the floor, Bruce.
So basically, the pavement, I'm looking at north of Silver Lane. The pavement would go to the east side of where the town island is. Am I correct in saying that?
Roadway pavement, the roadway would be widened about three feet on either side. It'd still be within the right-of-way of the road, except for...
Right, but the road narrows up as you get past, the right-of-way narrows up as you get past Silver Lane?
Yes, the right-of-way does narrow. The right-of-way for the road is following this line here, and then it jogs in, and then it would be basically...
So you're right on the edge of the right-of-way?
We'd be right on the edge of it right here, and then we, to continue the sidewalk, we'd actually have to go outside of that right-of-way.
Another five feet?
It's a, it varies, but it's usually less, it's usually less than five feet. It's two or three feet along here. So sidewalk will not be completely outside of the road right-of-way, but it will extend outside a couple of feet. They'll check that. There's, there is one area where it's completely outside the right-of-way right here, it looks like. So there is this one short section, sidewalk would be outside of the existing right-of-way, but the rest of it would be, the right-of-way goes down the middle sidewalk.
Personally, I don't like that plan, because that's my problem.
As you're remembering now.
And it is, I'd be losing like five feet to the front. Yeah, there's not much there. The rest is, it's not.
Yeah. So I mean, that's certainly something we can take into account. Like I said, we were trying to accommodate some feedback we heard, that people thought it would be good to have sidewalks all the way to Claybrook Road, but if there's opposition to that, we can certainly change it back to the way it was.
Lauren?
You don't have an overlay on the elevation, just so that you can see the difference? Like, you can't see the existing versus the new?
Existing, we have the existing lines on this plan. They're faint. You'd have to get up close to see.
Can we take, if any, to take a look at this? Because it's hard to comment on it from this distance.
Yeah.
All right, why don't we take five minutes? And so if we can just kind of create a line and just do a, have folks just kind of circle around like you're in a museum. Do you want pictures?
Oh, I just, thank you. This is for me to picture.
Oh, you can have the...
Oh, I can. Oh, thank you.
All right, so now that we've had a chance to look more closely at the plans, let's open the floor up again for questions and comments.
So I don't have, I don't have a solution, but it just seems to me that, you know, if I were to characterize what makes Sunderland's unique, or what you would say is sort of the heart of Sunderland, it's really north and south Main Street with the tree-lined streets, you know, and we're trying very hard to maintain the canopy as we can, and the character of the houses sit back and the green space and all that stuff. So it worries me to lose, you know, looks like at least five feet of green space on each side of the street.
Right.
And, you know, if, it seems to me that if we're, if our, it's one thing to improve the road, but if what we're really trying to do is support the downtown, all for bike, for having space for biking, and it would be nice to have better sidewalks, I don't know, I don't know what the choices are. They, you know, the sidewalk is never crowded, so, you know, could we, can we do something that way? You know, it's nice to have it, but do we need, I don't, I don't know, be on one side of the street or bigger on one side, not the other. I don't know. But it just seems to me that we are, you know, if anything, that the street should narrow, the traffic should be slower, that we should be, you know, have a different pace in the center of town, that it's not, you know, maybe a state highway, but it's not exactly a state highway, it's the town center. And this looks to me like it's just faster, wider, more generic.
I mean, we're trying to, you know, we're trying to use the minimums that the state allows us to do. I mean, the five-foot wide sidewalks, that's their minimum width for ADA accessibility. There are options to go down to four feet and then have a, what is called a passing zone for wheelchair, wheelchairs, every, I think it's every 200 feet. So it's something that, you know, we could look at that alternative, if that's something the town wanted, the narrower sidewalks. The wider sidewalks do encourage, they make it easier for walking, but if, if we really want to minimize the pavement, we could, we could look at having the four-foot walks and the passing zones. Is something we'd have to get approved by the state? We can ask the question, if we can get it approved, we can try it.
I think there's a problem there with the trees, at least on my side, because now you'd be going another four or five feet towards my house, and I'd have more land close to the road than I would near my house. I mean, my house would be 15 feet from the path, or 10 feet from the path.
And even the sidewalk would go into your living room.
I'd rather have the sidewalk on the edge of the road than I would have it further closer to the house.
Right.
Like that. And I actually like the road being a little bit wider. I see a lot of people, not just big-time bicycle people, but local kids riding on that road, and they're within inches of those cars. And some of those cars, you know, they're jamming their brakes on, and luckily, they haven't hit anybody yet, but it's, I've seen it very close. I mean, luckily, I don't have any kids, so I don't have that problem, but I've seen a lot of other people like that. And the pathway wider is always maybe nicer, smoother is what the problem is, that a lot of the older people that walk up and down that thing, they're tripping on roots and holes and poths, you know? So that being wider there isn't as critical to me as getting it smoother.
Okay.
Nancy?
I live on North Main Street, and already, there's an awful lot of truck, traffic that's pretty noisy and often going pretty fast, maybe faster than it should be going. And I'm very much in favor of having a safe place for bicycles, but just expanding the roadway is troubling to me, because I'm afraid it's just going to, as Lauren was saying, encourage higher speeds, more traffic, less caution about bicycles and pedestrians rather than more. And I'm just wondering, is there any wiggle room, you're talking about how the sidewalks, there might be some wiggle room for having four-foot sidewalks, but it's really the roadway that I think we're most interested in. Can we have a narrower roadway but keep the bike lanes as wide as what the regulations require? And are there, are there design, you know, sort of creative design solutions to separate bicycles from cars, you know, whether it's a rumble strip and painted lines or even a curb the way you see in Europe? Or I just, you know, just like to encourage some creative thinking here.
All right. Yes, we've looked at whether we could narrow up the travelway to this type of roadway, which is classified as an arterial, and then it'll, travelway width, travel lane width is 11 feet, which is what we're proposing. In order to go narrower than that, you'd have to request a, what is called a design exception from Mass DOT. In order to get a design exception from Mass DOT, you really have to show what the impacts would be, and, you know, you have to have justification for your design exception. There, you know, the one thing that we would have would be, we're looking to slow traffic down. Other than that, the extra foot doesn't cause any impacts necessarily to trees, to the environment, to, to, there's no wetlands that we'd be impacting, there's nothing like that, that typically we would use as justification on projects to go with a narrower roadway. Because we have a very wide layout, we're not impacting the right-of-way of the road by going 32 feet wide.
Is there something such as like the character of the town that can be?
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly the option to try it, but it does cost, you know, it does cost the town the effort to prepare a report. You have to prepare a pretty extensive report, and the likelihood of success is probably small. But if town really wanted to try it, it can be, it can be requested. There's no guarantee it'll be approved.
I was gonna say, one thing in our favor, though, is that 47 is considered both a national and a state scenic highway. So I would suspect that, you know, federal law and state law would... So I would suspect that, you know, federal law and state law would maybe be bendable in that respect.
Do we have any limit about the speed limit there?
Um, no.
It's supposed to be 30.
Yeah, no, that's also not. Speed limit, that is also very difficult to get changed in the constituents.
A more intentional top.
Yeah. State likes to base the speed limit on what people are actually traveling. Um, so if people are already traveling above the speed limit, um, they, they want you to do a speed study to see.
Most, mostly the trucks traffic.
To see what people is traveling, and then they, they want you to set the speed limit at what people are already traveling, so to reduce it is difficult.
I see towns where they say trucks be 20, others be 35.
Right, is there a way to discourage trucks? Do we have any ability to?
Well, what happened was, those bridges, the bridges up and above all closed, so all the truck traffic from turners came down through.
Right.
Now they don't want to go back over the bridges anymore, they keep, they're still coming down. I mean, you can see though, all the trucks, they're all from Montague, they're coming down with that.
Plus they avoid the wait stations.
They weren't coming down before.
Alex has been waiting patiently with her hand out, so he's gonna recognize her.
So, um, I, you know, I cycle up and down that road, and I'd love to see divided bike lanes, but, um, one, one of the proposed plans worried me a lot, which was to do a combined north-south travel lane on just one side, which would have you crossing the road to get onto that bike lane and then recrossing it, that just seems like a death trap.
Yeah, that's the other issue with providing, you know, a shared use bike lane on only one side, um, we have, if you had a bike lane going down this side and it was intended for travel in both directions, the vehicles, the, the bicycles heading this direction have to get over to it, and at some point they have to cross the street. Um, so which, that makes a challenge, um, creating a bicycle crossing. You know, if you want to have bicycle paths on both sides, they both have to be eight feet of pavement, so you're talking, you'll end up with a lot more pavement out there than we have proposed now with just widening the shoulders. Um, and it'd be a lot more cost as well to construct two bicycle lanes, one on each side of the road. So, I mean, it's something we've considered, and we always find ourselves coming back to the least impact is actually just widening the shoulders.
Yeah, and like personally, I think it'd be safer to have that shoulder than to have to cross that road over in a way that motorists don't expect you to.
Hmm. Agreed.
Go ahead.
Um, may I ask, and I'm sorry that I don't know this, but what precipitated the proposal, like the project? Was there?
Right, so, so the, the road needs work, there's, there's fundamental drainage issues and, and just the road surface is deteriorating. So the, the town had two choices basically, to resurface the road with our own money, which we don't have a lot of, or to request federal funds. So the federal funds come with a lot of strings, and the strings are making it wider and straighter and, and ADA accessible, and, uh, so, so what, what they've proposed here is the minimum standard that we could get away with and still use the federal funds. Clearly, it, it greatly, greatly, greatly increases the cost of the project, but the only, the only expense that the town is bearing is to hire, uh, the design engineers to pay for the design, and then whatever right of way is required and, and, and any other, um, costs that wouldn't be included in the project. So kind of a double-edged sword. You get the money, but you make concessions that come with the money.
Bruce?
Couple of concerns I have is the overall look to the road, but I listened to everything, and that might be the best plan. Um, the present elevations of the road and the drainage structures, are those going to be raised, lowered, stay the same, uh, or haven't you got that far yet?
Right now, we're proposing, uh, to keep the elevation of the road itself relatively the same, um, and not making a lot of changes to the profile of the road, you know, up and down.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, we're looking to not reconstruct the, not dig up the road and fully reconstruct it, we want to maintain existing subdies, because we've done paving cores and the subdies material looks like it's good, and it looks like the most economical option would be to just mill off the top layer, just grind off the top, a couple inches of pavement, and then put back, um, a new, uh, course of either two inches in some areas, some areas we're looking to actually beef it up and put four inches, um, where they're currently less paved and up there and half, so.
How about the edges, which you're right now just dirt?
Uh, we'd also be looking to stabilize the edges, just gravel, but it would be compacted, well-compacted.
You'd dig it down five feet or whatever?
Yeah, it would, we'd dig it down to, um, you know, a couple feet.
Yeah.
In order to, so we, we, you don't want us to put in a new road and then have the edges fail. So we want to make sure that the, the edge of the road is, is well, well constructed.
The, the elevation of the drainage structures, would they stay the same? Would they be lowered some? You know, like the top of the catch basins?
Uh.
To catch the excess water coming out?
The elevation of the catch basins would generally stay the same, unless we're changing the grade in that area, then we'd need to move them up or down. Really, the amount of water they collect, um, isn't necessarily related to their elevation, so, um, it's really how much of the surrounding area is, is draining towards that, I guess, but.
If the catch basin is lower, it's going to catch more water.
Um, if, if you re-raise the whole area around it, yes. If you just lower the structure down a little bit, it's not going to make much difference if you don't change what's around the structure.
Could you put rumble strips throughout the road there to slow the traffic down a little bit?
Uh, we, putting in rumble strips, it's not typically done on this type of roadway on arterial.
Especially with bicycles.
And.
Yeah, but you don't got to do it on a bicycle path, just put it on a roadway path. Because when those trucks hit those rumble strips, they're gonna wake up and realize.
They'll make more noise when you're.
But it's somebody else's house.
No. They'll fire by this.
Yeah, I mean, if you're there the long night long, I mean, it's something that can be done, but it's not.
Don't they, some, don't some communities have signs that say no air brakes? Am I using the right term?
Um, yeah, no.
Jake breaks.
Boy, you're a skitz.
I mean, I don't know.
Those are signs that could be, I think those could, could be installed, I'm not sure.
I, I think it's easy to install the signs, it's another question about who's going to enforce.
Right, it's whether anybody actually abates on this question.
Fred?
Um, I don't know if this was part of the project, but was the integrity of the sewer system investigated, being that it's mostly in, in the road, and if you're gonna, you know, renew the pavement and all, you don't want to come back and, or be doing the sewer work.
Um, I mean, we talked with the highway superintendent about it, um, he didn't seem to have a concern with it, but we can follow up and check again, um.
Does anyone know how old that is?
I don't.
No. Fred, we did, we did the camera work on South Main Street where we sent the cameras down to look at it, and I just, I don't know if we ever did North Main Street.
We relined some, it might have been on that side, it was relined a few years back.
And, uh, Old Amherst Road.
Old Amherst Road.
They had the cameras out there.
So, I mean, we will be looking to, at the crosswalks that we have proposed, we're putting in, we can look to do something, uh, at those locations to make them really stand out, which could help slow the traffic down. We'll definitely have the, the, the proper signage at those crosswalks so that they really stand out at, um, and do do something at the crosswalk with maybe, uh, changing the color of the pavement. Um, I know other communities have done things like that. Um, it is something that has to be maintained though, so it's something that the highway department would have to, uh, be willing to maintain, uh, whether it's paint or whether it's actually, uh, putting some color in the asphalt or something like that.
I just had a follow-up question on the, on the drainage questions. Would any of those structures kind of come out into the bike lane, or is the bike lane would be just like the road but for the bike? Or would you have to be like, you know, dodging super greats and this and such?
Uh.
Like you do on South Main.
Uh, we don't have anything, any structures proposed in the shoulder of, uh, so I, I think it would be, uh, structure-free, safe for the biker.
Yeah.
Yes.
So just following up on what you were talking about in terms of the crosswalks, it sounds like that's a good strategy for slowing the traffic down, and just wondering if, in your experience with other towns, if there are other things that actually do work, not just putting up signs, selling trucks, not to, you know, but, you know, what works?
Um, I mean, there are, there are some traffic calming strategies that work, that they, a lot of them don't fit this situation. Uh, uh, sometimes, sometimes we've looked at, you know, having choke points in the pavement where you narrow it down, but then that defeats the purpose of the bicycle condition, because then they're choked to, um, the, you can, I mean, on our arterial roadway, you, you can't typically put in speed humps and speed bumps, it's not meant for this type of roadway, which is meant to handle, you know, uh, high volume of traffic and, and, you know, emergency, um, vehicles and things like that would be impacted by, um, putting those in. And you'd also, it creates noise as well, that type of thing, in a residential area that would be a negative thing. Um, so, I mean, we're trying to do what we can as far as with signage and minimizing the lane widths. Um, we can do something with the, the crosswalk to make them stand out more, color the, color the crosswalk. Um, we don't have a lot of other alternatives that we can implement on this type of road. We are open to other suggestions, but we have looked into it, and there aren't a lot of things we can do to really slow traffic. Um, enforcement is a, is something that obviously would help. Um, that's, uh, obviously that's not a 24-hour a day. Um, you could look to put in the, I have seen, uh, communities put in the signs, uh, this is your speed, the flashing signs, the radar, you know, they're permanent, they're actually mounted on, on posts, rather than the ones that, you know, that move around temporarily. So.
So in Amherst, they've done speed humps, they've done speed bumps, which neither, this location wouldn't be eligible for either of these, but on a state numbered route, they put in speed tables, uh, and that's right adjacent to Amherst College, uh, because they have heavy pedestrian traffic there. They have three or four, uh, speed tables, and they, if you don't slow down, you bottom out. I mean, you, you learn after, after the first time, so I'm just wondering if something like, because it doesn't make noise, it's not like the rumble strip.
Right.
But it, it definitely slows you down.
That's right, aren't we not?
Yes.
Um.
But we, we probably don't have the A. Camper's College.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, we may not have the pedestrian volume to, you know, to warrant that. We can explore that with the state, see if they, if they will allow it.
All right.
So can we pursue the design exceptions to try to get the whole thing narrower?
And, and really, that'll be, uh, the, the, we're just, we're just hosting this public forum, but, you know, all the decisions are going to have to be made by the Board of Selectmen, so, um, I'm, I'm gonna defer to.
Well, Neil, my only question would be how much would that cost for the study? Because that would be clearly one thing that we'd have to make front.
It, it seems, after looking at this, it seems like we're not left to put any real, put aside enforcement for a moment, um, methods to calm traffic, given the type of artery that it is than we have now. And based on what I've seen in the traffic studies, I will say that people may not like to hear this, but a lot of the offending speeders are people who live in the area and people who live along there, and we've seen that in other parts of the town too. It's not, obviously it is trucks, but it's also a lot of the local traffic that we bomb up and down, because we've seen the speeds and we've seen the commuting times and things like that too, so, um, I think enforcement is probably going to be unfortunately our best bet to calm speeds. I mean, there's, it seems like we're really limited, and we don't have an awful, a lot of options right now, I mean, people look at the way it is now.
Well, the speed limit there is higher than it is on 116.
The speed limit on which?
Which stretch?
Which stretch of 47?
Right through the main street.
It's 30 miles an hour.
35. 35.
It switches to 30.
30 on 116.
It's 35, but it switches to 30, um, right at, at Claybrook.
No, it's 35.
35.
Eh, you're speeding.
No, it's 35 all the way down.
Yeah.
And then it's 30 on 116.
Coming, are you saying coming into town over the Cooley Bridge?
No, 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 coming from, uh, Montague.
There's a sign that says, before you get to the center of 47, coming down 47 and 116, there's a sign that says 30 miles an hour.
I said 35.
You're, you're a speeder too then.
I don't, because my house isn't that far, so right there.
You know, the crosswalk.
Go ahead, Bruce.
The crosswalk concept with crosswalks up at the beginning, up further north, might slow the traffic down, because I used to walk Main Street quite a bit, and I, I noticed that, that the, at the crosswalk on the south end, the South Main Street, the traffic seems to slow down a lot as, as they approach the, the crosswalk.
I mean, the crosswalks themselves may.
Think about like, hey, what's up there?
Yeah, you got one there and one down, you know, that might, you know, like.
If you position people there, they're gonna start out.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we could put maybe a, a speed sign there.
Yeah, maybe put some of those blinking lights in the road or something, you know, I don't know, like, you know.
I mean, it, we'd like to, I mean, we've all mentioned this, and, you know, I think we've heard this from a number of boards, we really want to do, well, two things, they may be at odds sometimes, but we really want to accommodate bike traffic, because there's loads and loads, loads of, you know, obviously, there's loads of bike traffic. This is a heavily traveled bike route, especially in the summertime between races, and, and it's an avid bicyclist route, especially because it's a scenic roadway. Um, but we also want to calm the traffic, and that, that's, those are two very, very, very important things to us, and obviously trying to maintain the scale. And I know Belcher Town went through some similar problems when they were trying to work on parts of, of the road that went through there too, because they were trying to maintain the scale of the similar situation, but improve the drainage generally, so.
I don't think we can stress that enough.
I don't know how you can resolve it, but I mean, obviously we clearly need to work on enforcement, but I think like, yeah, like you were saying, with the crosswalk up there, but, you know, that might.
I think don't go a lot.
Yeah, with the signing, if we had the crosswalk at Claybrook, the signing, maybe we put the sign up that says this is your speed. People really realize that they're entering into an area where there's going to be pedestrians, it's different from where they're coming from, and, um.
That might happen, because we were just chatting on the car, I mean, I have a little sidebar, that there's one on, when you go through North Hadley and 47 there, and that, that tends to make most people slow down. I mean, some people see it more as a challenge. And, I mean, hopefully we don't point it right into somebody's living room, because I always worry about that, because I hope sort of the bend there were just, and it must drive them crazy, if it flat sort of in the, in the window, but.
I had a question about a crosswalk, uh, between the two kind of parking areas there, it's in, in front of the Blue Heron, uh, because I see a lot of people walking across the road.
That's a good one.
And so if there was some way to get some crosswalk in that spot.
Crosswalk in this area, which actually leads me to one thing I forgot to bring up was, uh, we were asked to look at some parking alternatives.
That's right.
For the Blue Heron, uh, so we've got a couple of different ones.
Like, you get a lot of people parking on the side in the library and walking over the Blue Heron.
So we looked at the possibility of angle parking. Um, the issue with the angle parking is, uh, we can't fit quite as many spaces. Uh, we also looked at trying to do We also looked at trying to do something with this big open sea of pavement here. We have the parking spaces and then you get your travel lane and then you get this space in between it. We were asked to look at whether we could fit some more green space in there. So we looked at a couple of different alternatives. One would be to add more green space, add like an island, separating the travel lane and the bike lane from the parking and angling the parking so you come in, pull into the parking spaces, back out and you'd have to go back out that way. That resulted in loss of quite a few spaces though, went from 15 to nine. So you're losing six spaces. And then the other option was to just put grass in between the parking and the sidewalk. But that, that option, I guess, puts you further away from the businesses. And then when you step out of your car, you would have to either walk across the grass or go into the bike lane and over to where we have like a little center area where you cross the grass median. So neither one of them is ideal and even that option, we lose three spaces. So something we wanted to present, let you know that we looked at it. I'm not sure that losing the spaces is going to be a popular thing, but.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Just a comment on that. I know in the mornings, there's a lot of tractor trailer trucks that park the way it presently is between the road and the parking spaces. Because they can go from there over to the corner store to get their coffee and whatever. And I, you know, that gets them off the roadway. And that might be, you know, we just leave it the way it is.
You want to be nice to the truck driver?
Well, I mean, the distance to town and everything else, it's better than them parking in the travel lane.
Well, actually Bruce, the, the way that this plan is drawn, if they were to continue to do that, they would be parked in the bike lane.
No, there's still space there. I mean, there's space there, they could park.
Well, with this option, yeah, they'd either have to park in the bike lane. If they pulled in here, they'd be blocking all the parking spaces. And with that option.
They'd be in the bike lane.
They'd be in the bike lane and they'd definitely be blocking the people that were parked.
But the way it is now, they'd just be parked.
The way it is now, I guess they, they just park. The way we have it proposed, I guess they could park right behind the bike lane. But then there might not be enough room for people to pull into the spaces.
In the morning, there's no one there.
If there's no one there, I guess that's an issue.
David.
On this one, is it necessary to have, where you've got the median, the separator there, the island or curving or whatever? Do you have to have the spots angled for that? Or can they be straight?
With this one? You know, you would need them to be angled to have the median there and have them straight. You wouldn't have enough room to back out.
With perpendicular spots, you need a wider aisle to be able to back out in turn. That provides the narrowest aisle that you have. If you went perpendicular there, you could reduce the width of that green island. But then you, you probably have to go to like a flush concrete island. It would offer a visual difference, but there wouldn't be a physical barrier there.
Yeah, that might.
You know, a flush one. Even with that, the trouble with that, I think people run over to the thing. You know, you'd come in at night and stop.
Well, that's a reminder of a plow hitting.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that would be, that would be a curved.
I'm not sure what the intent of that second one was.
Second one?
That was just to move the parking spots closer to the road so you didn't have such a wide or large paved area there.
Add some more green to the area, I guess, more grass.
I think it would look more like a downtown as opposed to a big huge.
It would look a lot like the parking on the opposite side of the road. The parking spots adjacent to the road, a little bit closer to the road.
What does the second one lose spots on? Just should I have to mention that?
This one loses a few spots just on the ends.
It's really because of the maternity movement coming from Warner Drive. Now you're closer to the radius, so you lose one on the end. You lose one in the middle to allow pedestrians to access that center sidewalk. And then on the opposite, on the far northern side, you lose a spot closer to the driveway.
What about a hybrid where you cut the width of that down and then have some kind of differentiating pavement behind the strip parking space? And you keep the parking spot straight?
So keep the parking spots straight.
All right, cut the width of that down.
Make this narrower.
And then have a differentiation of pavement behind the.
Behind the bike lane or.
I don't know if that would change that.
Color it green.
Yeah, I mean, I like the idea of the other one, like differentiating with different paint. But then I'm also thinking about like the maintenance of that, not yet. People won't want to pay for.
If it's concrete, you can add color to the concrete so you don't have to maintain it, but it does have an initial expense.
Stamped concrete.
Dan, go ahead.
Just, I just wanted to just get back to the separated lands. I really encourage you before we get too far, just to take a hard look and come up with your best design for what you think could work for separated lands, whether they're one directional, six feet wide. I mean, it's got to be better than a four foot wide shoulder, having a six foot wide separated one directional. I just, I'd really like, talk to the Complete Street guys in Boston, Little Rubito. I think it would be worth your time and worth the town's time if you just explored that option. Just came up with what you thought would be the most feasible through the state. Talk to them about what design exceptions you'd need, what, what could work. And I really, the biggest thing to me is I want something to define the village on both ends. I mean, as you come into town, it's, it's a shame you come flying down the hill. It'd be really nice to have some kind of mark, some, something to really define the village and really in the future on both sides. And it's a real critical time as far as, you know, design on this. And I'd really like to see, encourage the select board to have them make that extra step at this early stage.
So you're asking for up and down on one side?
Well, whatever could work. You could do, you could do single directional bike lanes on either side. And he said, I guess, I didn't realize that they want you to have eight feet. You could do six feet. You keep your sidewalks where they are, have a second bike lane, you have 29 feet of grass.
One of the problems with that, and I can understand, is whatever side you pick, they're not going to be happy about.
No, I'm saying you could, you could do it on both sides. You could do six foot lanes on both sides, you'd be five foot sidewalks, you'd have six foot, maybe, or eight, you say eight, but maybe you could get, get away with something narrower.
The other thing now is pedestrians get close to getting hit by cars by backing in and out.
Yep.
Bicycles come twice as fast.
I understand.
There's, there's going to be a problem.
And they, they get that on the, they're going to get that on the road too. I mean.
Yeah, but people stop before they go out on a road. They back up in their driveway and they don't look. I see that all the time. So, because they think of it as their driveway.
Right.
And they go, and you see people walking, just literally stopping like that because they're blind.
In the back and then in front.
I just would encourage the selectmen to pursue any design exceptions that are going to make it better. The, the board is going to have it in now to get it.
Oh, yeah, I think, I think we should look at at least how much it'll cost us to do that. I mean, I think we need to look at every option we can to get the best design now, early in the stages. This is the time to do it. I don't know if this question got answered about the crosswalk down by the Blue Heron though, because we kind of jumped off on the argument.
Yeah, crosswalk down the Blue Heron.
The only, the only concern is the, the distance from that crosswalk to the intersection of 116.
Too close?
I, I, we would have to look at the, what the minimum distance would have to be there. Because that's a major intersection.
On the other hand, though, if the 120 North Main project goes through, then I think we're going to want a crosswalk from North Main to the library. So I think that it's.
Put one on 120 North.
Or put it, I mean, I think we're going to want people to get across to, to be able to access the library by foot without going to the corner. Yeah.
Some crosswalk in this area here.
Yeah, that would be great.
Actually, because I'm thinking of North Hampton, there's Pleasant Street, there's a crosswalk not that far from the intersection.
We can certainly look at.
Yeah, either way, somewhere between where the parking starts and that next big island there. Yeah. There's a driveway there. Yeah, right. Yeah, exactly. Somewhere in that range, we're going to need some kind of crosswalk at some point if we can do it. Because there'll be a number of reasons why. The bottom line is getting a lot of people back and forth, whether it's elderly or patrons of downtown businesses.
Right. I mean, I think the most likely place that we could put it would be here if we didn't want to impact any of the parking. We'll have to look to see if it's too close to the intersection.
At night, if people park at the Grays and go to the Blue Heron, is the reasonable to have a crosswalk there.
Exactly.
It would be better to have it, I think.
Like a school street.
Going around the air.
Right, at that.
Yeah, because that's, that would be the point.
Highest traffic point.
Yeah, otherwise they ain't going to walk down towards the moles and walk.
They'll just cover it over the street. Yeah, I think if you saw two crosswalks.
You'd slow down.
You'd slow down. And you'd realize that if we're not on the highway, it's not going to hurt, right? Yeah.
Go ahead.
I was just curious about, because you mentioned both ends, why is South Main not a part of, of any of this?
We, we resurfaced South Main, I don't know, 10 years ago, 12 years ago, so.
It's not, it doesn't mean it.
Yeah, well.
I mean, the sidewalks are just as bad, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, yeah. So, so the sidewalks really, federal funds aren't really eligible for sidewalks. But when you kind of tag them into a, so this is basically, this is a roadway project that also has sidewalks. And so we can kind of stretch the limits of the project and get the sidewalks piggybacked onto a road project.
I was going to say, just to kind of follow up on that, there's a group called the Sunderland Community Capitalist Project. And we are looking at what we can do from what's going on with the North Main Street as to what we could potentially do on South Main Street to improve the sidewalks. So we're looking for additional funding and something that would enable us to do that. But we need to understand the design on North Main Street because we want to be consistent. And we don't want to do something that will make the street look different. So we're just kind of tagging along following. So we will hope to, to change those as well.
Go ahead.
That's been one of my pet peeves a while, forward to non-existent lighting and sidewalks and stuff.
I'd like to go, but I actually like 99% of this, just so the board's voting like that. I like 99% of this. I think that they.
You just don't like the sidewalk through your living room.
No, I'm saying if they move it towards where it's now, it's okay. And you said that's where it is now. If it stays where it is, I'm okay with that. But if for some reason it was to shift over and put a bike lane up in that far up, it wouldn't make any sense to me. Plus you'd take out all the trees. I'm sure you already noted like that. So, but I'm actually fairly pleased with it. Hopefully we can get the drainage like South Main where they got good drainage on the side of that. So it'll be good.
Thank you for coming. So there's, there's one issue that hasn't been discussed at all. And I just would like to bring it up before we close this hearing, and that's the sycamore tree. And I don't know if you'll consult an arborist or if, if the town should be consulting an arborist. We're going to be introducing additional asphalt closer to that tree than currently exists. And just what accommodation has to be made to preserve that landmark?
Yeah, I think going forward, probably in the next phase of design, we would, we would recommend getting an arborist involved. Something we would talk with the select board about whether, you know, it's a consultant to us or whether it's hired directly by the town. But, you know, for this, for this initial 25% phase, we want to get something to ask DOT, get their comments and their feedback before we go too fiery to, you know, all the real details.
Yeah.
So, and yes, we'd suggest that not only for that tree, but probably have an arborist look at the potential impact of any of the trees.
We currently show the sidewalk further away from that tree than what the current.
I noticed that it takes quite a jog there, yeah.
Yeah, we're looking to try to minimize the impact to that tree. Have no impacts hopefully. But an arborist would be recommended to get their opinion as to what would be needed to make sure that that tree is not affected.
All right, Bruce, and then after Bruce, I'll take one more and then I think we're going to have to wrap it up.
This doesn't have anything to do with North Main. Has anybody on the selectmen or the planning board thought of further north on Route 47, a bike wave, you know, all the way up to like Falls Road or something? Because that, that road is the most dangerous part of it all because it's narrow, it's curvy and stuff like that and.
Yeah, the guardrails are right up against you, so there's no.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, it's tough there, it's tough. And, and I don't know if you thought further with this project, maybe getting a bike path put up there or something? Because that, that's, to me is bad.
Yeah, it is. It would entail a whole other one of these projects essentially probably. That would be in the long, long range plan.
It's another eight tenths of a mile.
Because then also a bridge that you have to line in a culvert just north of Claybrook Road.
Yeah, yeah, you would, yeah, you have to do something there, yeah, yeah.
But yeah, I agree. Because bikers go right up and then down Falls Road too. Falls Road, you don't have the traffic.
All right, one last. Go ahead.
What's the timeline, what are the next steps?
Right, so the consultant is currently at the pre 25%. So we've just piled a ton of stuff on them. This poor fellow's been writing on his, trying to get every last comment. So they're going to try and incorporate all of these comments, whatever they can, they'll address all the comments. They might not incorporate the comments. They're going to address every concern that was raised tonight, come back to the town if that alters the plan or if it doesn't alter the plan, the rationale for why it doesn't alter the plan. And then at, at that point, they should be about at 25%. They'll make a 25% submittal to the state. And then at some point, the state will hold a very formal 25% design hearing. They'll bring a stenographer and it will be very, very rigid format. So those traditionally happen, they, they usually open up the doors at 6 o'clock, have a half an hour of viewing and discussion, and then do a very formal proceeding starting, you know, at 6:30 until 7 or 7:30. And then, and then there's a 30 day window to submit written comments on the 25% design.
Will that be here, Dave, or in North Hampton?
It will be here.
When, when would that be?
It's not going to be for a while.
The design public hearing is typically at least six months after we submit 25% design. They have to, all their departments have to review the design, issue their comments. Sometimes we have to provide some responses to their comments before they'll allow the design public hearing to go forward.
Is like nine months a year out?
The, the project itself, we're, we're competing with all of the other projects in Franklin County. So right now, our best case scenario would be 2019, but a more realistic is probably 2020 before we're, we're actually doing this project. It's not going to take long to do the project, but we're in line for the funding. And that's really what the, what the holdup is. If, if we had the money, we probably could do this project within 15 months.
Can I ask a follow-up time and question? Sorry, is that okay? So at what point do, like if we're, we're somebody who, like our property would be, is, is a question about the sidewalk coming into our property? Do we get like informed with a letter?
Absolutely, that, that you'll be required. If, if there's going to be any right of way takings, there'll be, you'll get a legal, a certified letter informing you that. And, and so, so there'll be survey work, there's, there's still a lot of, we're, we're still, even though this looks like it's really finished, there's still a lot of tees to cross and eyes to dot. So we're, we're a ways off.
And I think they'll have, they'll come back to the board of selectmen too. So you'll get another, because you guys will come back to us, I'm sure, with whatever changes you have. So there'll be another opportunity for people to get in on that too, so.
And these documents are on the town website now. So if you want to look at them and play with them on your.
Right.
I don't think these, I don't think the ones that are on the website are.
The ones, the ones that you just, so, so the changes to the parking and the expansion of the project from School Street to 116 are not incorporated in what's online. But as, as soon as you forward the, the electronic copy, we can get that loaded up onto the town website so everyone can have access to it. So I, I want to just, you know, cut it off. These guys have to drive back to, to New Hampshire and, and Boston tonight. So I, I, I'm thankful for you all coming out on this snowy night. I think this was a really productive discussion. And you have some work.
People who aren't here who want to submit a written comment, they can email it. People who aren't here who want to submit a written comment, they can email it to the Board of Selectmen.
Absolutely.
So, if you're, the hundreds listening at home, we'll be able to talk.
Through the television audience.
All right, so the Planning Board meeting's going to continue. We're going to take a five-minute recess just so the television crew can wrap up and, and go home and then our meeting isn't going to be very exciting and no one's going to want to...
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.